I'd like to call the April 4 Tuolumne County Planning Commission meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll first start with any reports from commissioners. Commissioners? No? Any reports from staff?
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that we do have items for our second meeting in April, so we will be sending out those agendas shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we'll move on to the report from the Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representative.
Nothing from me, thank you.
A report from the Agriculture Advisory Committee Representative.
No meeting.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the election of officers. We'll start out with the chair. Does anyone have any nominees?
I'd like to nominate Peter Rye. Excuse me, I didn't get to him there.
May I nominate Peter Rye, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
For chair?
For chair.
As long as it's not my name, absolutely.
Also, all in favor? Aye. Okay. So since our new chair isn't here, I'll wait to do the vice chair. I'll do the, I'll nominate, help nominate the vice chair and then probably pass it off from there. Vice chair, any nominations? Any self-nominations? Dick nominate someone. Go ahead.
I'll be the vice chair.
Okay, perfect.
I was just gonna say, I'll nominate Heidi.
Perfect, all right. Is there a second?
It's her turn.
Of course.
All right, so all in favor for Heidi?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, I'm gonna switch it over to Heidi, correct? Does she come over here or do I just pass it to her?
You just pass it.
Perfect, all right.
I might need some help here.
Yeah.
Vice chair is a state of mind.
Except for tonight, right? All right, so now we'll go for Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representatives, and it says two next to that. That's a change?
Is that new?
Any nominations?
I'll nominate myself, 'cause you have a lot of meetings, it seems like.
I know.
So I'll be one if...
I'll second that, Cole.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've nominated Cole, and we need a second representative.
I'll do it.
Oh, I'll second that.
So Cole and Mike. Moving on to alternate Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representative. Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, alternate Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representative.
Overwhelming.
Dick, who's, who are we missing? One other person, right?
Jerry.
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 We should nominate Jerry.
I think we should. You go ahead and do that.
Or do you want to nominate him for one that's not an alternate?
Let's make him be alternate.
All right. So then I'll move to nominate Jerry for the alternate position.
Second.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we've nominated Jerry as the alternate Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representative.
That leaves you two.
That leaves an Agriculture Advisory Committee Representative.
I don't, I'm doing it.
So do you want to, do you want to make?
I'll do it again.
Okay, I'll nominate Dick for the agr- representative.
Good.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Dick will continue to be the Agriculture Advisory Committee Representative. Now we have the minutes of the meeting of March 7th.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 7th, 2018.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Oh.
Well, that's right.
So we don't have a court on them?
I wasn't here, never mind, I can't do that.
You can, I believe you can vote to approve them even if you were not here, was what we discovered last time.
Yes. If you have reviewed the minutes and you don't have any questions, you can go ahead and vote on them. If you need additional time, the chair can move this item to later on in the meeting, unless you have already reviewed it and are ready to make a motion.
So we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we move on to public comment. The public may speak at this time for any item that's not on the printed agenda. Just as a reminder, the commission cannot take any action on your comments.
This is pertaining to conditional use permits?
If it's not on the agenda, yes, but if it's an item we're discussing tonight...
I have no idea what's on your agenda.
The agendas are in the back corner there, as well as all the items that we have in our packet. Just wait, or... Okay, any, any public comment? Okay, moving on to our first item, which is the Wynn-Fader General Plan Amendment. We'll turn that over to staff.
Hello, I'm Natalie Rizzi, and I'm the planner for the Wynn-Fader General Plan Amendment, GPA 17-003, zone change, RZ 17-006, and variance, VAR 17-003. And the applicants are Douglas and Christine Fader, and Earl and Joanne Wynn. All right, and to just remind everyone about some of Tuolumne County's vision, mission, and values that we strive to achieve. Tuolumne County is a place where all citizens enjoy opportunities to thrive in a safe, healthy, and productive community. We provide services that create a healthy and safe community. And our values, we try to encourage innovative and creative approaches to problem solving. All right, and some general information about general plan amendments and zone changes. Any person may apply to change or amend any part of the general plan and zone change. A property owner must have a zone change approved if the owner desires a land use that is not allowed under the existing zoning. And some general information about variances. Variances shall only be granted when, because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning. And the project description, there's three parts to this project. The first part is to amend the land use designation of APN 039310033, plus a 0.7 acre portion of 058390016 from estate residential to low-density residential. A zone change to rezone the 0.7 acre portion of APN 058390016 from residential estate, two-acre minimum, to single-family residential, and a variance to allow two sheds within the six-foot side setback. And all of these three components are to facilitate a lot-line adjustment between the two properties, so that the property boundaries and fence lines of the official recorded map match what the property owners have been using, and so the sheds will be on the correct side of the properties. The location of the project site is 19467 and 19539 Rawhide Road, and the general plan designation of both those parcels is estate residential. And here's a map of the current state of the project site. And as you can see, the two parcels are estate residential. And then here's a map of the proposed general plan amendment and zone change. And the general plan amendment is to have it so the zoning is compatible with the general plan. So comments from adjoining property owners? No comments were received by the Community Resources Agency for this proposed project. All right, and so the decision process tonight. The Tuolumne County Planning Commission may either recommend to the board to approve the project with conditions, recommend to the board to approve the project with any modifications, or recommend to the board to deny the project. And that's for the general plan amendment and the rezone. And then the decision process for the variance, the Tuolumne County Planning Commission may either approve the project with the conditions, approve the project with any modifications, or deny the project. All right, do we have any questions?
Any questions from commissioners? Thank you, Natalie, that was wonderful. So now the public may speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project, you may come up. Please use the microphone and speak into it, so everyone can hear you, please.
Heidi, can I make sure, and also according to the Brown Act, you don't have to say your name, but you're welcome to.
My name is Bob Osborne, and I represent both the Faders and the Winds in the process of what was just described to you. The problem emanated probably 60, 70 or more years ago with some incorrect boundary surveys, and were discovered, I don't know, about a year ago or so. And to correct the problems, this is the only way to do it. There's no administrative way to do it. It would be a benefit to the public if there were. It would save some folks a lot of money, but this is the process. So, other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
You say you're representing them. What is your position or title?
I'm a land surveyor.
Good enough, thank you.
According to the information we have, there is no dispute among these families. Is that correct? They're both in agreement?
There's no dispute.
Right.
And what this will allow is that the legal descriptions of the property will allow the continued use of them the way they have been for many, many years. Hence, the sheds that were, I don't know how old, quite old, being up next, close to the fence, that's what everybody thought was the boundary for all those many years, you know, we find out that it isn't. So rather than have to destroy or try to move the sheds, we requested a variance.
Of course, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the project? Seeing no one, anyone who'd like to speak neutrally?
I just want to say that that was very well done, and I want to applaud you for pointing out that it's a lot-line adjustment and explaining the boundaries, 'cause I think that makes it really clear to people exactly what we're doing via this process, so thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak neutrally? Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to the commissioners. Go ahead, sir, sorry.
I just wanted to comment briefly on this. This has been going on for, the gentleman said a year, but it's been going on for about two years that I know of. I'm adjacent to this, I'm not directly involved in it, but I'm about 300, 200 feet out of the, out of the property itself. It's taken a terribly long time to do what is, in fact, a simple lot adjustment, and I would simply want to comment about that and point out that someone might want to give some thought about how this will be handled in other situations in the future, 'cause many, many houses were built before this county had a building code.
Anyone else wishing to speak? With that, we'll turn it over to the commissioners. Dick?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the general plan amendment based on findings A, B, C, and D, and that we approve the zone change based on findings A, B, C, and D, and that we approve the variance based on findings A, B, C, D, and E.
And conditions, one through three?
Say one.
Conditions, two.
And the conditions, Dick?
Well... Yeah.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Now we'll move on to conditional use permit, CUP 17-015, Michael and Deborah Rash, and we'll turn this over to staff.
So my name is Natalie Rizzi, and I'm also the planner for conditional use permit, CUP 17-015, and the applicant is AT&amp;T Care of Epic Wireless. Again, to remind everyone about the vision, mission, and values of Tuolumne County. Project description, conditional use permit, CUP 17-015, to allow the construction of a 73-foot-tall stealth-broadleaf wireless communications tower, equipment shelter, and support equipment within a 40-by-45-foot fenced compound. The project site is located at 8664 Milpitas Road, just north of the intersection of Los Cruces Road and Milpitas Road, which is in Unit 1 of the Lake Don Pedro subdivision. The project site is a nine-acre parcel, zoned RE5MX, which stands for residential estate, five-acre minimum, mobile home exclusion combining. The APN is 073014010, and the general plan land use designation is rural residential. And this shows a map of the general plan and zoning of the project site and the surrounding parcels. All right, so this is a picture of the design of the tower. It's designed as a broadleaf stealth tower. The actual height of the tower is 63 feet, but the branch crown is 10 feet, so making a total of 73 feet tall. The designs show room for one additional carrier in the future. These designs also show that the compound will be surrounded by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with three-strand anti-climb barrier to discourage trespassing. Here are some visual simulations of the proposed tower. The first picture is the view from Avenida Lugo North, looking southwest at the tower. And the second picture is the view from Milpitas Road, looking east, and that one is just down the road from the proposed site. The applicants also submitted a landscaping plan. The plans indicate that Toyon California coffee berry and hollyleaf cherry, along with the existing blue oak trees, will, will be planted to help screen the facility from surrounding views. All three of the species proposed to be planted are California native, evergreens, they have low water needs, and they are on the county's list of recommended plants for landscaping. And the landscape plans also indicate that root-watering bubblers will be used to irrigate the proposed vegetation, and there is no tree protection plan needed, because no trees bigger than six inches at four-and-a-half feet are going to need to be removed. Adjoining property comments, the Community Resources Agencies received one letter from adjoining property owners that was neutral about the proposed project. In your decision process tonight, the Tuolumne County Planning Commission may either approve the project with the conditions, approve the project with any modifications, or deny the project. All right, do we have any questions?
Any questions from commissioners?
None.
Okay. At this time, we'll ask for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project. And as a reminder, you do not have to introduce yourself, but you're more than welcome to.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Nick Taggus with Epic Wireless, on behalf of AT&amp;T. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak this evening. So this project is part of the CAF II funding project from the FCC to bring in high-speed internet into rural areas of California, and particularly Northern California, where there aren't so many available options for high-speed internet that is both affordable as well as reliable. As of January 2018, because of our governor signing the FirstNet program, this tower will also be eligible for the FirstNet program, which will be for our first responders. It will be a system that allows all sections of the first responders to communicate with each other on one network. And in the event of a natural disaster, a fire, earthquake, when we are trying to call our families, our loved ones, if we're hurt, we start degrading the system by everyone using it, they will throttle our usage to then give that capacity to our first responders to be able to then answer our calls to them or to communicate to each other. So it is a threefold project. First and foremost, it will provide high-speed internet to the citizens around this general area. It will improve the coverage gap currently for AT&amp;T customers in that area. And then also, it will be eligible for this FirstNet program, once the tower is, is built, if it is approved. When we first approached the area back in January of 2017, we took it upon ourselves to reach out to the Lake Don Pedro Homeowners Association, and they were very generous and kind enough to allow us to speak at one of their Board of, Board meetings with the entire community. Roughly between 85 and 100 people showed up, allowed us to spend over two hours with them. And there was a great sense of enthusiasm, and obviously there were some folks that had concerns about the project, about a cell tower being in this residential area, but the impacts, we decided that we wanted to mitigate them by steffing the tree as much as possible, by bringing the height down. The height could have been proposed taller, that would have obviously stood out a little bit more, but that would have allowed for more than just one additional carrier to be co-located. The idea was to balance between less towers in the area and more future carriers to co-locate on one tower, but also to mitigate concerns of view sheds being sort of, you know, interrupted by the tower. With that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer any of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi to everybody tonight. Appreciate you being here and us being here. I'm gonna wear two hats tonight. One's gonna be, I'm the landowner, so where the site is, and number two, I'm a retired deputy sheriff. So I'm gonna give you some insight first of how a project like this can help first responders. When you're responding to an incident, a very bad incident, we're getting our calls through dispatch. Dispatch, it's like getting a call from a third party, okay? We try to get the most precise information we can, but we know that if I'm talking to either one of you who are at the scene, it's gonna give me a better aspect of what I'm going to. Can we all agree on that? So how this is gonna improve, and I didn't know till tonight on the internet part of it, but if I'm a patrolman, or if I'm a fireman, or if I'm an EMS, and I'm responding to a call, and I have a phone number which comes up on my computer in my patrol car, or my ambulance, or whatever, I can call the individual that's there, or I can call the victim. If they're in a car wreck out in the middle of a rural area, then, you know, where we would not have coverage now, they could sit there or be off a cliff. We know, how many times we read people going off cliffs, and we find them two, three days later? Sometimes they live, sometimes they don't. But if they had additional access by phone, I think the coverage area would be a big plus for, for all that would be responding. Another one that came up, I was at the meeting that was put together by the Homeowners Association. Most everybody there was wanting to, of course, go up in a day and they could start using their internet and cell phones, but we know that's not the case with anything like this. But those that weren't in, that weren't totally for it, not that they were totally against it, but their concerns were, one being that we're gonna put a tower up, as he mentioned before. And, you know, I think they've done their best job to try to camouflage a tower. We've been driving down roadways for how many years where we have landlines, you know, for electric and phones? Do we even see those anymore? No. We're blind to all that now. And I think with time, you know, we're gonna be the same way with towers. We drive around all the time, there's towers on top of this and that and everywhere else. We don't even notice them until we want to look at one. That's when we see a tower. Another one I didn't even mention originally with EMS is PG&E. When we have a major incident where there is a power line involved, and we need PG&E there to cut service, again, there's another outlet that we can use if we can call them or by internet to contact them, to come out and, and cut the, the power. I made some notes here. The coverage area is, is pretty much, I think we can all agree that we could use more coverage area. I've heard that this project's gonna cover quite a few people in the area that don't have it now, and that's exactly what we're all trying to strive for. Another one I put up is, just as a nuisance to some, is streetlights. How many lived in neighborhoods where they put up a streetlight? And how long did that, that streetlight, was it a nuisance to you? You know, coming in your window? After a while, we all get used to those things, and that's how this tower will be. It'll be something that eventually we'll all get used to. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name's Forrest Raid, and I happen to live within 700 feet of this project. I've come to it a little late, just found out about it about a month ago. So I never knew there was any meeting at Don Pedro. We received a letter, the house is in a trust, so the letter goes to my father and it's relayed to me. So when this was decided that the permit was going to be issued, that's when I first found out about it. Looking at what this project is gonna do, I would love to see better cell coverage in that area. Caveat to that is I have Verizon, I use it in my house, I use it around my neighborhood, my wife walks around the neighborhood, talking to her friends on the phone. I am out on Cooperstown Road, do you have a, do you all have a pamphlet of this? If you look at where the project is projected to cover, it covers mainly Cooperstown Road. I would say, well, most of that coverage, probably, I would say 60% of that coverage is out on a dirt road, which is all grazing. It's, this map shows the, the back of it. That's mainly grazing area. I drive Cooperstown Road, talk, send pictures to people. I drive Cooperstown Road, talk, send pictures to people of the beauty out there, no problem. One thing I have a question about is with the county codes, there are several, several sections that say it needs to blend with our surroundings. I don't see where it blends. We have 30-foot oak trees, you're talking about a 72-foot tower that looks like a pine tree? It doesn't fit. They have a picture that they they mocked up, a couple of them I see in this, which when I looked at their use permit, wasn't evident. One of them wasn't evident. Today, I took the time to take a picture from my house and project what this is going to look like. Can I hand this to you, that you can look through? This is from my my place, and on the back. Photo was taken today, so I can't, you don't see the Sierras in the background. That's that's gonna stick up in that photo, those Sierras are right about the same height as the background mountain there. This tower also sits within 200 feet of the Rashes' house, within 700 feet of my house, within, I think, 500 feet of another home, and its projection for the microwave is gonna go right through my place, right through the upstairs story. Epic Wireless never contacted me about it. I had no clue that this was coming up. I am, like I say, within 700 feet, I sit at a taller taller location than Epic, or than the Rashes do. I would be a perfect site for it. Why they never contacted me? I don't know. I don't, wouldn't want it there. Another point, they say there was only one letter submitted. I submitted a letter due by the 13th of October, and I stated in there, looking at the county codes, the county codes say it must visually fit the area, it must be harmonious to the area. I don't see that. I see this thing is sticking out like a sore thumb. If you want to put it somewhere that's going to fit our environment, put it by the commercial buildings. Yeah, that might not be the absolute ideal spot, but visually and harmoniously with our neighborhood, which is rural and kinda like being able to look out and see, I see my neighbors, I see the land around, I don't wanna see a cell tower sticking up 60 feet, 70 feet. This does not fit with our neighborhood. It would fit fine up by the Hacienda, which is the upper end of their projected, well, they say it's outside their their, the engineers, when they when they analyze the site, from what I saw on the permit that Natalie has, all they said was they would reject the site. They didn't seem to give any reason to me why they would reject it, they didn't show what coverage area it would cover, or where the hidden spots would be. All they said is, we reject that site. It seems like it would fit well at the Hacienda, where it is commercial, where it is not residential, where it is not sitting 200 feet from someone's home with RF waves coming out. If they sell the house, someone else moves in, is the county liable for it, or do they just pass it off? If you find out that, yeah, some of these studies that say, if you're within 1,000 feet of a of a radio frequency tower, you're liable to get leukemia as a child, those things would come way down the future. I mean, I don't think this is the ideal site for this. It may be ideal for Epic and AT&amp;T to put it there, so they can repeater around with it, but it is not ideal for the neighborhood, and it's not ideal for us living right close to it. I know there's a lot more I was thinking about, but that's all I can come up with. One thing that struck me as I'm driving here, as I'm leaving my house today, is that microwave energy is going right through my upstairs bedroom, right through it. If they're going to repeater down in the valley, judging by this map, I'm right in sight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm his wife, and I live in the same house he lives in, and I did not come prepared at all to speak, so I may not, I may not sound like I know what I'm talking about, but all I, I'm coming from the perspective of health. There are studies, lots of studies made, that cancer rates have tripled among people living within 400 meters of cellphone towers. And there have also been studies found that levels of radiation emitted from cellphone towers can damage cell tissues and DNA, and cause miscarriages, not that I'm thinking of having a baby or anything, but, you know, there are other neighbors that live around the area. And I just don't, I came out to live in La Grange to have a peaceful, quiet life, and I don't wanna have fear surrounded me by, because there's this big ugly tower. I have a cellphone that works. Like he said, I walk around the neighborhood, I talk, I'm constantly on my phone, always on my phone, and I have no problem with my Verizon. So, I don't know, I don't even belong to AT&amp;T, so it's not gonna benefit me in any way. And, like I said, I didn't really come prepared, but I don't wanna be a victim of of RF radio frequency. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll ask for anyone wishing to speak neutrally?
I just have a question for the AT&amp;T representative, because I found his comment confusing, that you are mitigating some of the concerns of the neighborhood by lowering the tower. And you said something about that it would only be for AT&amp;T and not any other collocators. So that concerns me, if we're gonna build this, that it's only for AT&amp;T when it's supposed to be increasing broadband internet, and that should be available to other agencies too. So I'm concerned that the tower is only gonna be...
I think you said that there's a one spot for colocation?
Is that what it was?
Yes.
So there'll be at least one other colocator? Okay, good. And then to the other concerns, if you have your cellphone, that's probably more dangerous to you than a cellphone tower.
Thank you.
Right.
Folks, if we can keep the comments up here, please.
David Harris with Conifer Communications. We provide internet service primarily up to Highway 159. Then there's a ridge right there that breaks over, and our our line of sight falls off rather rapidly. A point of clarification, this tower's been funded by CAF funds, Connect America funds, which are Obama-era FCC funding. This area is primarily Verizon territory, that's why Verizon phones work down there, and the telcos carved up areas. You can basically state that the CAF funds, the the language and verbiage of that was ghostwritten by AT&amp;T. If it wasn't for us as the taxpayers paying for this tower, this tower wouldn't be going in here. And given that we, as the taxpayers, are paying for it, I don't understand why AT&amp;T isn't placing the tower further down the hill and and shooting back up. I'm not overly familiar with the area below that area, but I think there's a great deal of rangeland that the tower could be sitting on instead of shooting some RF signals through some of these people's homes. And that concerns me, because I do know many school districts won't allow any cell towers within thousands of feet of their schools. So something to consider. I I'm taking no stance on this, but I just don't like the fact that the Trump administration has decided to roll back net neutrality, which I think they should have, which is benefiting the Googles and the Facebooks of the world, but they're allowing this this taxpayer funding of these towers against other carriers such as Conifer, or against, in this case, Verizon. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I might make a comment. I think that at our last tower hearing, it was pointed out that the method of financing is really not on our agenda. We're talking about land use, protection of the public, and so on, and where the funding comes from is really not something that legally we're we're entitled to discuss, but...
Yes. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak neutrally? If you've already spoken, you can't speak in a different... All right. Now what do I do next, Cole?
You can open it to rebuttals.
I mean, the rebuttal versus sir rebuttal, you can ask if someone who spoke in favor wants to rebut any of the things that were spoken opposition. That opens up a rebuttal, sir rebuttal. If no one wants to speak in rebuttal, then that's it.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak in rebuttal?
One other note, since you are gonna speak in rebuttal, for those who did speak in opposition, you are allowed to speak as a sir rebuttal, but you can only speak on things that he is talking about in rebuttal.
Thank you, Cole.
Thank you again, Nick, with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. So more of an educational opportunity here. The purpose for these towers being put in in these areas, the the point of the high-speed internet program is different than regular LTE coverage, where those towers can be further away from the folks that they're meaning to provide service to. So the further away the WLL program is, the greater the degradation of folks that will be eligible to receive this high-speed internet program. Therefore, in the Lake Don Pedro Homeowners Association, it is such a large swath of land that encompasses Lake Don Pedro, that there are three areas that have been proposed within the Homeowners Association to provide high-speed internet for those three different areas within the Lake Don Pedro area. The comment was made of the propagation map that you all have, pages two and three, that is the propagation map only for increased cellphone coverage. That's what that's demonstrating and showing. It's showing the previous on page two of what the current coverage for AT&amp;T is, right, to showing their coverage gap. Page three is then showing the LTE network, both in building, meaning inside your home or a commercial building, and then in transit. This is not a propagation map showing which homes are going to be eligible for this program. What we do know is that the Rashes' property exceeded the target to to bring in high-speed internet by 146% of homes. So it it met the target and beat it substantially, which means more people are gonna be eligible for high-speed internet in that area. Lastly, concerns about health. One of the folks who spoke tonight in neutral is very correct. Your phone produces on the order of between 40 and 50 to 60% of the threshold of the allowable electromagnetic frequency emissions. The closer you are to your phone, the more you have it on your ear talking on it, the more radiation you are getting directly into yourself. Because these towers are outside of 700 feet from homes, 200 feet from homes, and then you add the height of that tower, the the rate of receiving electromagnetic frequency is exponential. So by every 100 feet away, or every 10 feet, it drops by a percentage of square. In this case, the state of California licensed engineers, who if they were to ever say anything erroneous, wrong, incorrect, they would lose their license. And these studies came back showing that this tower, at its current height and location, beats the FCC emission standards and is at 2% of the standard. So if they allow up to 100%, it's at 2%. And the way that they came to these standards, these standards here, this this study would also exceed and beat European standards, which are a little more stringent than federal FCC standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anyone else wishing to speak in rebuttal?
Only rebuttal first. Does anyone else wanna talk in rebuttal first?
Yeah. I think you'd fall under sir rebuttal.
There is one more in favor, but if they don't wanna talk.
I won't keep up, I won't take a lot of time on this, 'cause I think it's been covered, but I have Conifer, and I'm glad we had a representative here. The problem is, I have a neighbor who has, and I'm not gonna use the technical term, but a relay or something on their house, which is supposed to help my service, but it does not. And I've had them out, basically, what I have is what I get. And I've tried to go over, they say unplug it, let it sit for a minute, and replug it in, and that sometimes will restart, but it's not perfect. And you know what? We all know when it doesn't work is when you need it the most. And and then again, you know, as far as the radio frequencies, this whole room's full of radio frequencies, we're surrounded by them right now, live with it every day. I have to believe in in technology and those that are trying to protect us all to make the right decisions, and so, pretty much, that's the only thing I had to add.
Thank you. Okay, now we can open it for sir rebuttals, and as a reminder, you can only speak to the information provided in rebuttal.
In the back of what I, in the back of what I handed you, there's a copy of the letter, which, when I went into the planning department and went through, looked through the permit, Central Sierra Environmental Resource Center sent a, I guess, a recommendation, I don't know if they have any power at all, but in there, they say, "In the vicinity of the project site, four or five of adjacent parcels are single-family, one of these adjacent residences within little 200 feet." The rights of existing, well, up above, they talk about the potential health impacts of RF waves on sensitive individuals, especially young children or elderly individuals who reside for periods, long periods of time in in close proximity. At the bottom of their first page, they say, "The site does not appear to be appropriate location for microwave tower if the county community resource considers the potential impacts that would occur for existing residents around..."
Sir, you may only speak to the information provided in rebuttal.
Am I going outside of it?
Yeah.
Well, they, they're using part of their...
I understand, but you can only speak to what the gentleman from Epic Wireless and the other rebuttal spoke.
Didn't they just say that there was no harm from the microwaves? Did they, did they not just say that?
You can only speak to what they have said.
And I don't know how I'm not speaking to what they said. I don't understand.
Are you talking about RF waves right now?
Yeah. I'm talking about the RF waves, what our local environmental agency or resource center put in their permit, put in the permit that you have, it's probably the only negative thing I've seen in there. They do not agree this, and they refer to, as mentioned, our comments on the previous project regarding the Nixon parcel in La Grange. So there's a whole nother permit that was evidently adversely affected by the RF waves. That's all I can add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask staff to clarify a couple things at this time.
If it's on what was spoken opposition, technically, right?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to clarify that that the permit for this project for the Rashes' has not yet been issued, it's why the project is here before you tonight. Also, just wanted to clarify that the Central Sierra Environmental Research Center is not a county entity, it's a local nonprofit group.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are the Rashes' gonna benefit personally from having this tower? I have a question. Are the RASH's going to benefit personally from having this tower on their property?
That's something we, Dick was talking about. We can't consider monetary.
And that hasn't been discussed earlier.
So, that's it. Now, you can...
Okay. Now, we'll close the discussion and turn this over to the commission.
I have a few comments. I made my living working in microwave communications and building a lot of the equipment that, well, by now, there are probably better designs out than what I had. And we went through many, many, many of these kinds of hearings and tests. And the FCC rules are very clear about what is allowed. And as he pointed out, the energy drops to the square of the distance, so it ends up that the cellphone in your pocket is radiating you harder than from a tower. And most of those studies that they talked about where people were starting to get some, having issues, was never linked to it, but they linked to the fact that the person had a cellphone. Did they have a lot of cellphone usage? They said yes, and the cellphone was right up to their head. So, you know, there's a difference between ionizing radiation and non-ionizing radiation. RF energy is non-ionizing, so therefore, it does not modify DNA or do any of the stuff that boils water and all this other stuff. So, you have to kind of keep those straight. So, I think the FCC is not going to allow permits or licenses to anybody if they felt that the energy that was being emitted was harmful in any way. So, I don't see a problem.
Good information.
Very good.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioners, Dick?
Yeah, I just point out, you know, you look at these coverage maps, the current coverage map and then the one if indeed the cell tower is built. I find that really striking. You know, of a number of cell towers that have come before this commission, I think this is one of the most amazing increase in coverages by one tower that this commission has seen, in my opinion, anyway. It's a big, big difference. Thank you.
I agree. And I live in an area of the county that's quite rural, and we don't have more than one cell provider. And for me, the emergency response that this can help is very instrumental. I think it's incredibly beneficial to these areas of the county.
Madam Chair, may I offer a motion?
Sure.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Thank you. I move that we approve conditional use permit CUP 17-015 based on the following findings and subject to conditions 1 through 37.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing no one, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll turn to staff for conditional use permit 16-016.
Good evening. My name is Renee Hendry. I am the project planner. On November 16, 2016, Michael and Jacqueline Bearden and Verizon Wireless applied for conditional use permit CUP 16-016 and variance VAR 16-005 to place a wireless communication facility on a parcel at the intersection of High School Road and State Highway 108/49 west of Jamestown. Whoops. Where's the back here? Sorry. Here are the vision, mission, and value statements adopted by Tuolumne County, which are utilized as a guide for the process in each project application we receive. One of our values is to encourage innovative and creative approaches to problem solving. The original application proposed to construct the wireless facility approximately 58 feet from the southwestern property boundary and 65 feet from the southern property boundary of the site. While the cell tower was proposed to be 88 feet from the southwestern property boundary within a required 200-foot setback of a parcel zone RE2, which is residential estate, two-acre minimum. On August 2, 2017, the project was reviewed by the Tuolumne County Planning Commission. The Community Resources Agency staff recommended denial of the proposed project due to lack of findings to support the requested variance in relation to the close proximity of this facility near the RE2 zone parcel. The planning commission then proposed to send the project back to staff to work with the applicant to relocate the facility to a more feasible location on the project site. On October 31, 2017, the applicant submitted revised plans to relocate the wireless facility to the southeastern area on the project site away from the RE2 parcel and so that it would be located approximately 84 feet from the southeast property boundary in the vicinity of High School Road, which is still within the 110% setback area required by the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code, which would normally be required for a tower of this height. The project site is located at 17330 High School Road northwest of the intersection of State Highway 108/49 and High School Road. The site is currently being utilized as the Service Master Carpet Cleaning Business. The general plan, land use designation of this site is BP, which stands for Business Park, which does allow for a variety of commercial type of businesses. Here is a map showing the location of the project site in relation to State Highway 108/49 and High School Road. The gray area on the map is the general plan, land use designation of Business Park. Here is an elevation of the design of the cell tower, which is proposed to look like a broadleaf tree. The equipment area is proposed to be fenced with a six-foot tall chain link fence, which is also going to be enhanced with earth-tone colored slats. Here are photo simulations of what the proposed broadleaf cell tower would look like from State Highway 108/49 and High School Road. To the casual observer, this tower would look like a tall tree. Here is a setback diagram that was submitted by the applicant. The dark angled lines near the southeast corner of the site is the proposed location of the 35-foot by 35-foot fenced wireless communication facility. The tower itself would be set back 84 feet from the southeast property boundary within the required 110% setback area, which, like I said before, would normally be 93.5 feet. As a result, a variance is being requested to allow the tower to be placed in this location. Here is a map that was submitted by the applicant of the visual range of this tower. The area that is shaded in green would have some ability to view this proposed broadleaf tree tower from their parcels. The portion of State Highway 108/49 has been designated a scenic route pursuant to figure 4.2 of the Tuolumne County General Plan. The proposed location of the wireless facility is in an area, though, that's already impacted by the Service Master business and other nearby businesses. The project site is also elevated approximately seven feet above the highway corridor due to a cut bank. The project was reviewed by property owners within 1,000 feet of the site. Some of the concerns were exposure to radio waves, the height of the tower, and its visual aspects as viewed from the state highway, and the possibility that project site might generate more noise. Verizon Wireless has a license from the Federal Communications Commission to ensure that emissions from the wireless communications facility meets the standards allowed for exposure to people. The facility is being designed as a stealth facility with the use of a broadleaf tree to minimize its visual impact to the state highway corridor and neighboring properties. However, the tree will be taller than any of the surrounding vegetation. The project is not expected to create any noise in association with this operation. The planning commission needs to make findings for conditional use permit CUP 16-016 to ensure it is consistent with the general plan, ordinance code, and is also suited to the permitted uses under the zoning district. The use must not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The planning commission also needs to make findings for variance VAR 16-005 to ensure granting the variance does not constitute a grant of a special privilege, does not allow a use not authorized by the zoning regulations, and will not cause a detrimental effect on persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The planning commission can approve this project as presented, approve this project with modifications or add conditions, deny this project, or send the project back to staff. Following the decision by the planning commission, there is a 10-day period where the decision can be appealed to the board of supervisors. Any questions?
Thank you, Renee. Anyone have questions for staff?
I do, but I'm not sure you can answer it. Do you know why they're abandoning a tower and wanting to put up another one?
Basically, there's a tower, they bought out Golden State Cellular, and there's an existing tower that is down the road a little bit and off to the back. And they feel that that tower is antiquated and is also not in the optimum location. This one here would provide more coverage based on the elevation, I suspect, of the cut bank and its location in relation to other towers that supposedly see the signal as it comes. But perhaps an expert in the audience that works for the cell company could explain it better.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. If I'm correct, the scenic route designation is a local designation, correct?
Yeah, I asked this question at the last meeting, and that's locally. So, even if we put it up, it won't change our designation.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Dick?
Renee, I presume you assembled this package, our agenda package?
Yes, or most of it. The clerical also assembles part of it.
Well, I got to be really careful here. But the maps of the coverage before and after?
Thank you.
I've studied those studiously, and they're precisely the same.
I have to agree. That's why I asked the question.
Which tells me, what's the point of having a tower there?
No, moving. What's the point of moving?
But there's something wrong. The wrong map must be in the agenda, I presume.
Is there someone here from Verizon?
Are these the same maps?
Well, that's why I asked the question, why were they moving it? Because when I looked at this, and I've done a lot of RF plotting, it was like, no, these are the same map. Thank you. You were right. And why would you move it?
There's something wrong here.
Yeah, sure. Well, I'm jumping out of sequence. I'm sorry.
I'm going to take the lead from my other commissioners here. How do we proceed in this, or staff?
We'll wait for Quincy's.
So, these are the maps that were provided to the county by the applicant, so that's why they are included in your packet. Perhaps when you open it up for public comment, the applicant can do some more explanation about clarifying it.
Fair enough. Any other questions or comments from commissioners before we go to public comment?
The only other comment I remember is, we were, the reason this got pushed back, or one of the reasons I truly remember, is that we were trying to also work with the neighbors. If you look at one of the maps, it's a residential side, and we're moving it closer into the business park. I think you weren't here for that meeting, right? You weren't on the board yet?
We were here. He was here.
Were you here for this last meeting? The last time we had this before us?
I remember the argument coming from the homeowner.
All right. Okay, that was it.
All right. With that, I think we'll open it up for public comment. As a reminder, you do not have to introduce yourself, but you're more than welcome to. And I believe we'll observe a three-minute per person speaking limit on this one. So, with that being said, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this?
Yes, my name is Nathan Jagir, and I represent Verizon Wireless. You'd already started asking some questions, so it kind of makes it easy on me. Why don't I just focus on those items? So, this is a very different situation than most. So, the photo sims, you would look at those, I'm sorry, not photo sims, the propagations, you would look at that as being a monumental success, the fact that they're the same. Because what it represents is not coverage before and after. It's coverage now before a site's removed and a replacement that would satisfy. So, here's the point I'd like to make, that when Verizon Wireless purchases a company such as Golden State, they purchase a package. And it doesn't mean that every site serves their purposes for all of their reasons. And the reasons aren't only propagation. So, for those purposes, you have to almost look at those propagations as being a comparison to something that's going to be going away and something that's going to be replacing. So, that's why it would be unique compared to a before when there's nothing and a new site being put in. Does that make sense? There are some variances, and I'll be happy to show you with a microscope, because you can't, you know, obviously, we can't duplicate those items. I think there was another question, but we can get to that. So, as you can see, we did take some time between August and October to evaluate the concern with respect to the proximity to the adjacent residential property owner and shifted the site literally as far as we possibly could away from that parcel while not going the other direction, which is to put it right up against the road. So, this location was identified as being outside of the current landowner's use, which is their parking area that goes around the building, while also being up against some of the tree line that's there. This being a broadleaf is what it's referred to. The placing it towards the location of those existing trees, we believe, assists to some degree with some of the aesthetic factor, which is the purpose of the putting in a stealth-type facility as opposed to just a regular monopole or tower that you may be used to. A number of things have already been discussed in this meeting that I think probably prevent me needing to go in and duplicate a bunch of other items. But, so at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions?
Thank you.
No, I, if you're not, you have an existing tower, you have existing equipment, power is there, you're opening up this can of worms to move it. Why? What's the motivation to move it? It's already there and standing.
There's nothing here. There's a site that's down the road.
No, but I mean, you, coverage-wise, you're gaining nothing. I grant you that.
Sure.
But there's something motivating you to abandon the site and move it. And maybe it's none of our business, but...
I don't want to say that, but it's an underlying landlord relationship item.
All right. Fine. That's cool.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's a good question.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
I don't want to dismiss that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'll be brief. My name is Mike Bearden. My wife and I own Service Master, and we're more than just a carpet cleaning business. You know, we respond to water and fire damages in your home, the floods that we all experienced just recently. So, that is our reason for, you know, wanting to continue the coverage that would be moved down to our facility. But it's all I have, because I was here for the first one, and so were all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? With that, we'll ask for anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll ask for anyone wishing to speak neutrally.
Well, I was here for the first meeting, and there was a, the staff did not recommend approval at that time. So, they are this time. And I actually went out and looked at this property and looked at where the cellphone tower is going to be. So, I thought it was interesting that everybody was bitching and complaining the last time, and now it's actually going to be close to the road. So, there's no way you'll not be able to see it. But I recall part of the discussion was that it was going to improve coverage along the 108 corridor, like down tonight's ferry, because I know that area is totally, you go into this total Z-zone if someone's trying to talk to you out in that area. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
David Harris with Conifer Communications again. As a point of clarification, if I heard right, and I wasn't paying attention... As a point of clarification, if I heard right, and I wasn't paying attention to take a test here, but I think the existing communication is on a building. And so if that is the case, it could be a case of Verizon is looking to standardize its equipment onto a standard tower as opposed to a building. I'm only trying to draw a few lines. As far as our company, this may or may not be competition, but we're not opposed to it because this is not corporate welfare. They're using their own buck, dime, and penny to build it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak neutrally? Okay. Do we proceed with rebuttals? Okay. With that being said, we'll turn it over to the commission. Comments?
Well, I'd just say that I appreciate that explanation regarding those maps. I didn't mean to embarrass anybody. But I looked, and I looked, and I looked at those, and I thought, what? Because we always get a before and after. So I apologize if I embarrassed anybody. Appreciate the explanation. It's just moving it, and I can see the relationship with the landlord and so on being issues. Makes sense to me, and I'm sorry, now I brought it up.
I think it was a very good observation.
I'd like to propose a motion.
Okay.
Everybody all cool with that? I'd like to propose approval of conditional use permit CUP 16-016, conditions A through F, and the attendant variance, VAR 16-005, A through F at this time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:11.